Ashley.
Yeah, go ahead. You're live.
Thank you to Tom and thank you to the committee. It's nice to be with all of you today. I wish we could see you in person. We are recording this portion of the meeting, this presentation, because we think it will be good background information for others as we move forward with the clean water rate study and wanted to have it available. So, thank you for allowing us to get that set up. So, the next item that we have on your agenda is an update on the Clean Water Rate Study Project, including a discussion on the project's current status and what our next steps are going to be. Some of you may have listened to the city council presentation on this topic back on September 21st. So, for some of you, this will be a second review, but we are also covering some different topics in more detail than we did at that time. And I want to start by saying that this is really a team effort. Rate setting is a multi-disciplinary process. It's a part financial management, part operations, part long-range planning. And so, we have a team from all the different city departments, almost all of the city departments working on this, including Monica Molina and Ashley from Administrative Services and Joe Bride from Public Works, Joseph Smith, and then Beth Murray is also on the line today. She's our senior analyst in the city manager's office and she's leading this project. And then we also have a consultant onboard, SCI, and we have several members of the consulting team are on the call today too. Jerry Bradshaw, Kyle Tankardt, and Valerie Flores. We may not hear as much from them today because what we're doing today is more background, and then we're planning to do a second dialogue with you that's going to go into much more details on the specifics of the financials. And I'm expecting that we'll be talking more in length with them at that time. So, like I said, this is a two-part presentation today. Uh-oh, my screen is not... Okay, there we go. It's a two-part presentation. Today, we want to provide you with the background and lay the foundation about the clean water program and how the rate-setting process works and what we think this is going to look like going forward, because it is different than our other utility rate-setting processes. And then next time, back in November, we're hoping to schedule a meeting with you perhaps the week of November 16th to do more of a thorough review of the financial aspects of this and then the potential methodologies that we're looking at for how the rates would be set up. So, in your role as finance committee members, like we have for the other utility rate studies that we've done in past years, we're sharing with you this foundation of the rate study and the process, and there's going to be policy decisions that we will need your input on as part of how we move forward. So, I want to start with a high-level overview of the clean water program. I know this photo isn't very easy to see, but I found it on the Lagoon Committee's website and it's such a beautiful shot of the lagoon. So poignant for this topic, but there are federal and state requirements that the city is faced with to have a program in place to prevent pollution to the ocean, to our creeks and rivers and lagoons, ultimately to prevent runoff to those bodies to keep them clean. And Del Mar is part of two watersheds. I have these two images show San Pasqua... Excuse me, the San de Guito watershed, which is from Del Mar all the way up to Julian, and then the Los Penasquitos watershed, which is on the south side of our city, heads all the way up to Poway. In terms of the city's requirements to have a program in place to prevent pollution to the ocean in these two watersheds, the city accomplishes this through a combination of programs and capital infrastructure. So, for example, some of the kinds of programs are water quality monitoring in the creeks and lagoon, some street and sidewalk maintenance, storm drain cleaning, street sweeping, construction site inspections to make sure there's no runoff from the construction sites, programs to also then prevent urban runoff, like irrigation runoff and so forth, and then a lot of public education. And then there's infrastructure projects. Examples are repair and replacement of corrugated metal pipe, storm drain, curb and gutter improvements to reduce runoff, and then coming soon, something called trash collection devices that are going to be required to be installed at certain storm drains. This is a part of a new state law. And there's also a lot of reporting that the city has to do as part of these programs to the two watersheds that we're part of and the other regional water quality control board. And these efforts are working. We have a couple of beautiful photos here to show our beautiful San de Guito lagoon and the Los Penasquitos lagoon and some of the wildlife. This photo on the bottom right is actually from the San de Guito lagoon from just a few weeks ago. There were actually leopard sharks were spotted. You can kind of see their dorsal fins on the right-hand side, and I'm told there were like six or seven that are in the water here that you can't see in the mud, but it's good to see that all the hard work that goes into preventing the pollution is resulting in these beautiful, healthy wildlife areas. So, as additional background, the Clean Water Fund is what we call an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund means that it's financially separate and completely independent from the general fund. Ashley alluded to that a little bit in the last presentation when she talked about wastewater, a wastewater purchase that's separate from the general fund. Other examples of enterprise funds for the city of Del Mar are the Water Fund, the Wastewater Fund, which is sewer services, and then Solid Waste, the Solid Waste Fund, which is for trash services, trash collection. Enterprise funds have to stand alone independently financially, fiscally. The specific revenues for those services have to stay with that fund. The city cannot collect more money for those services than it costs us to provide that service. However, unlike the city's other enterprise funds, like the Water, Wastewater, Solid Waste Fund, the Clean Water Fund has historically relied on a subsidy from the general fund to the tune of $100,000 or more per year. So, the amount of revenue that we collect from the current clean water rate does not cover the full cost of that program and the capital infrastructure needs, which means then that the general fund is having to subsidize the Clean Water Fund. There is currently a clean water rate in place here in Del Mar that's paid by residential and commercial properties. You pay it as part of your utility bill, and it was approved by the voters back in 2008. Like the Water and the Wastewater enterprise funds, the rates for the Clean Water Fund have historically been established every five years through an in-depth analytical process where we evaluate the cost for providing the service, including the operating costs, the program costs, and the capital projects. And in 2019, as we were working on the rate study updates for Water, Wastewater, and Clean Water, it came to staff's attention that there are more modern ways of implementing the rates for clean water, which caused us to pause and switch gears. So, then at that point, this is a little bit more than a year ago, the city did an RFP to hire a consultant that has specific expertise in establishing clean water rates. We did that last fall, and the council awarded a contract in December 2019, and we kicked off the project. So, when you... Oh, I lost my... I'm so sorry. I lost my train of thought. But then, what happened at that point? Let's see, just a second. Yeah, just a second. My slides got a little bit out of order, but we were moving along, and then our next step was going to be to come to you as the finance committee in March. We were actually preparing for that, and then COVID happened. And so, things were on hold, and now we've been back on track with this project and are therefore bringing this to your attention, wanting to get your input. So, when you work on a rate study, one of the first things that you do is really understanding all the costs that you have associated with the program, because again, it's based on the cost of providing the service. So, to that point, in parallel with the Clean Water Rate Study, Public Works worked with our engineering consulting firm, Michael Baker, to conduct an assessment of the city's storm drain infrastructure, to assess the condition of the pipes and to determine what the needs are for rehabilitation. And the study looked at all of the city's storm drain pipes that are 18 inches or more in diameter, corrugated metal pipe or CMP. They looked at historical records to see each of the pipelines, the year it was installed versus the useful life for corrugated metal pipe. They reviewed the city's maintenance records to evaluate where the utility workers are cleaning the system on an annual basis and to document the conditions of the system at that point. They also did a physical inspection of 53 pipelines, and then there were 12 follow-up video inspections of pipelines that were not accessible, were difficult to access. And then based on that, they prioritized the pipelines into four categories by gauging the condition and the need for rehabilitation and its risk of failure. And through that, we have identified a list of capital projects that's estimated to cost about $2.8 million over the next 10 years. This is really important because proactively planning for these capital projects is critical. It's much more cost-effective than to do emergency repairs. And there have been in recent years several very significant storm drain system failures, such as, and there's a photo here on this slide, which is a failed corrugated metal pipe that was discovered in 2019 while the downtown streetscape project was under construction. So, you can see it's completely corroded and was discovered because the street was torn apart. And something like that, you run the risk of having a sinkhole or something like that get created, and it's, you know, very unfortunate, difficult, expensive circumstance. And so, you want to avoid having to handle those as emergency repairs as much as possible. And corrugated metal pipe, not unique to Del Mar, is used all over very commonly 50 years ago, and it's, you know, at and beyond useful life, doesn't last forever, and we need to be proactively planning for the replacement. So, this next slide shows failed corrugated metal pipe from Anderson Canyon back in January 2016. And then lastly, though not in Del Mar, but nearby in the city of San Diego in Crest Canyon, you can see this gigantic sinkhole that formed as a result of a failed corrugated metal pipe. And then you can see in the bottom photo where into the lagoon, the San de Gito lagoon, all this mud and debris that flowed there. And that's a circumstance of not only is it very expensive to repair, but you are also facing fines from the environmental agencies. So, it's really want to avoid having those emergency repair situations as much as possible, and that's why we're emphasizing planning for the capital infrastructure needs that we have. So, like I was saying, you know, we hired SCI back in December 2019. We had the Public Works working on the system assessment. We were on track. We were going to be meeting with you in March, and then I think COVID hit, and then now we've been back on track. And I want to say that a key difference about the clean water rate going forward compared to the current structure that we have, where as I mentioned, it's on the... You pay it on your water bill. It's tied to your water use, is that going forward, it's going to be property-based. It will be apportioned to each property, and it's on a proportional basis. That's a really important aspect of Proposition 218 as a state law that has to do with when a local government is setting fees or charges that in this case, it has to be proportional to the property. So, in looking at proportionality and then figuring out the methodology for the rates as they're applied to customers, or in this case, it's going to be property owners, a key factor is going to be impervious surface. Sorry, I didn't realize it. Okay, there we go. So, meaning the ability of the surface to either absorb water because it's pervious and porous versus impervious, hardscape, concrete, water doesn't absorb, water runs off, ends up into the storm drain system. So, we like this sponge illustration when we talk about, you know, the concept of perviousness and imperviousness. You can see the gray is the impervious versus the yellow. And so, within that, we're going to be looking at rates for residential customers and non-residential or commercial customers, which is similar to how it is today. But then it's going to also then evaluate this perviousness of the surface, of the surface area of the parcel, probably on the residential side, looking at groups based on a range of the size of the parcel, and then non-residential actually based on the actual impervious surface of the commercial property. So, there's going to be, as you can imagine, there's some technology involved there and figuring out what that is. And that's why when we have our next meeting with you, we want to go into that in more detail to explain what that's going to look like. So, as we're working on the rate structure, it's like the gold old, you know, three-legged stool. It needs to be, the structure needs to be easy to understand, easy to administer, and based on data, and has to be consistent with how it's allowed to be set up per Prop 218. And again, it's going to be property-based. So, this is really important because it's property-based, it means that there's a different approval process than how it is currently. I mentioned to you that the current rate that we have was approved by voters back in 2008, and it was through a mail ballot process, so not on an election, kind of a measure along those lines. It was actually mailed to the properties, and the properties approved it by a mail-in ballot, and we're going to be having to do something similar in this circumstance. So, also speaking to some of the differences. So, in this case, the slide SW stands for stormwater. So, on the left side, you have non-stormwater, and on the right side, it says stormwater. So, some agencies call clean water stormwater, and Del Mar, we always call it clean water. So, whereas with our water rates, wastewater, solid waste rates, we can... The maximum amount of time that you can set up those rates for is a five-year period of time, and that's what we've been doing the last few cycles of that. However, for the stormwater rate, there isn't a time limit when it is approved by voters. It can... It stays beyond that. However, then the structure is, it is what it is, and it's in order to update it or modify it, you have to go through this process that we're doing now. You have to do it again. And so, we're looking to make sure that we're really putting the good thought into this now and that these rates are going to meet the need for the capital projects, the operating projects beyond five years. However, you can build into it a inflationary formula, like a CPI or something like that, which is important because you have costs that continue to rise just regardless, just for, you know, showing up and keeping the lights on the next year. Things over time, as you all know, the costs increase. So, that just gives you a little bit more of a... I wanted to, because most of you are more familiar with the other utility rates, I wanted to explain to you some of these differences of how is this different than the utility rates that you're more used to seeing. So, back to the approval process. So, like I was saying, because it's property-based, the approval process is different than it is for our other utility rates. So, with our other utility rates, Water, Wastewater, Solid Waste, we have a hearing with the council where the city council reviews the rates, and they call for a... We call it a protest hearing, and then the city sends out a notification to all of the customers 45 days prior to that protest hearing. And so, then the public has a chance to review and respond, and they can submit... They can submit a written protest to the rates. They can show up publicly to the council meeting. So, that we, in our local government world, we call that a Prop 218 hearing. So, similarly, this clean water rate will also be subject to this same kind of a 218 hearing. However, in addition, assuming that passes, then the next step is there has to be a mail-in ballot process where each parcel gets one vote. So, that's different than the other circumstance. So, there's basically like these two significant hurdles. And so, of the responses that you receive from the mail-in ballot, you need 50% plus one of those that respond in order for it to pass. So, again, it's not the majority of registered voters. It's based on property owners. So, you can see it's a cumbersome process, and because it's so important, and I want to emphasize that the clean water rates cover approximately $800,000 of program costs that the city has every year. We think it's really important for all of us to be on the same page and to understand the significance of this and how we work towards a successful outcome in order to minimize the impact of this overall program on the general fund, because these are programs that are required by state and federal law for us to have. So, the costs are going to be there regardless of whether or not we have the rate. So, for that reason, we think it's going to be really important to incorporate good public education, to explain to the community how the proposed rate structure would work, what the clean water program is, how the clean water revenues are used to cover the program costs, and then why this funding source is overall so important to the city's financial position. So, we're still working on the details. We have two council liaisons, Deputy Mayor Gasterland and Councilmember Dave Drucker. And then we're going to be working with them on a proposed public education and public outreach plan, but preliminarily, this gives you a sense of some of the efforts we're envisioning. And it's a challenging time to do this as well, because some of the things that we would typically do during a non-COVID time we're not able to do. But I think there's still a lot of good opportunity. We just have to be a little more creative. And again, ultimately, since it's property-based, the... I feel like we have an additional challenge, opportunity to connect with property owners who may or may not be as dialed into our regular channels of communication, like the weekly newsletter or as regularly participating in council meetings and so forth. Terms of the project schedule, so we're here now in October, and as I was saying, we would like to do a second meeting with you in November to go into more detail on the specifics of the numbers. And now that you have this foundation out of the way, and then we would be reporting back to council January, February to do a preliminary introduction to them of that information, and then at that time, embarking on a lot of stakeholder engagement, community conversations, other kinds of stakeholder meetings. And then in March, we're envisioning to initiate the public hearing process. That's that 218 process I was describing. And then ultimately, in the spring, later in the spring, to do the mail ballot process of property owners. So, in closing, as I said at the beginning, this is what we hope is part one of a two-part conversation that we'd like to have with you. The next time, we're going to dig into the financial details to understand the expense side for our operations and CIP, and then the methodology of how we would, looking at how we would apportion this to the ratepayers. And because it's a very different formula, I'm expecting you'll have a lot of questions, and that will help us to go forward to understand the kinds of questions you raise so that we can use that as we then work with the broader community. And there will also be some policy areas that you want, we would like you to provide us with feedback on. So, this project is a very big undertaking, and like I said, it's a team effort and really exciting opportunity, I think, to share with the community what goes into managing the city's stormwater pollution prevention program and the CIP needs to ensure that we have a safe, healthy, reliable storm drain network, and why it's so important, and how we do so in a financially responsible manner. And so, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and hearing your comments.
Okay, I see Alan has his hand raised. Alan, are you muted?
Trying to. They're sorry. I'm having trouble clicking. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, so, and I'm sorry if I missed this at the beginning of your presentation, but what's the driver of this change in methodology in terms of who are the ratepayers going to be for this? I mean, why is this considered to be a worthwhile change to move it from the water bills to the property bills?
Yes, thank you. I did mention what we learned when we were working on our last rate study update, which was in March, spring of 2019. We were working on the rate study updates for Water, Wastewater, and Clean Water with a five-year plan. And through the process of doing that, what we learned is that there are more modern, appropriate ways to set the clean water rates to be reflective of the proportionality that we should be looking at as opposed to tying it to water use.
So, is the basis for that conclusion that those are more appropriate, is that going to be shared with us as well? Because, you know, you've got to sell this to the ratepayer basis, and I'm not hearing anything. I mean, I heard that statement, but I guess I didn't hear any of the underlying analysis, thought processes to why that's a better basis.
Well, that's helpful. We can be prepared to explain that maybe in a little bit more detail. It ties back to what I was describing related to Proposition 218, which is California law that sets how local government can establish rates and charges for services. And there's different... Within that, within that law, there's basically different approaches that you can take for water and sewer, solid waste, and then other types of things. And so, this stormwater is considered to be a property-based service, and therefore, you need, when you set the proportionality, when you, meaning the agency, there, you need to be able to make the nexus between the property and their contribution toward the cost of operating that system and the CIP. And that's where it's, because it's based on property size is a factor, the perviousness of the area as opposed to water use is not, there's not as much of a nexus to someone's water use compared to those other factors and what their impact is on the storm drain system and what the costs are. Does that make sense?
Yes, thanks.
And Kristin, just a quick comment on a follow-up on that. Does that mean that this is... This new approach is state-mandated, or is it one of several alternatives that we're deciding to choose?
Um, hold on just a second. Am I muted?
No, you're okay.
Okay. It's not state-mandated that it be done exactly like this. There are different options you can look at, and that's something when we bring it back to you, we can talk about different potential ways that you could do it. But so far, this has been looking like what the best route might be in order to really be attributed to that proportionality piece.
Well, and the reason that might be important is that when people see a change in the methodology of assessing fees or taxes, they immediately get suspicious and think, well, they're trying to squeeze us for more money, and they're, you know, doing it under the cloak of this change. So, how do you, in explaining this, convey the idea that this is a zero-based budget game, and it's not intended to increase fees? It's intended to be a methodology change. It's more appropriate without necessarily costing people more?
Right. And I... So, I think that's definitely something that we are looking at right now as we're figuring out based on especially incorporating the CIP expenditures. And like I was saying, we've now identified there's a healthy list of projects that are needed to be completed, which would have been an issue even with our current rate structure the way it is, and how to, you know, making sure that we have the funds to plan for those or that we as a community decide what's the tolerance of risk that we're willing to accept balanced with the amount of money that we have available to do the projects. So, that's part of what I'm envisioning is going to unfold when we talk to you the next time, and then as we go out and have those conversations in the community too, because I hear you in that, like I said, that's our goal too, is to keep the rate almost the same. There's going to be pluses and minuses for different people. Some people might see it where it ends up being a little bit less than they've been paying. Some might see where it's a little bit more because of how it plays out. But the goal is to try to keep it in the same family there, so it's more or less consistent.
Okay, thank you. And I see Scott McDonald has his hand up.
Yeah. First, a question and a comment. The question, how many housing units are there in Del Mar over which you would have to recoup $800,000?
So, we have about, my recollection is that we have a little bit over 2,000 properties, residential and commercial. But I don't have the exact number off the top of my head in terms of the number of parcels.
Okay, but that's a good start. So, an average, about $400 a year. And so, that gets to, I'm doing some arithmetic here, about $33. So, I'm looking at my last bill out of curiosity, or a recent bill, let me say, and it's $60-some dollars a month. Oh, for two months. Okay, so, that would be about the same. Okay, now, comment. When you look at the size of the lot, if that is one of the factors, there's a lot of complications in Del Mar with lot size, and I'll just give you one. My lot size includes half of my neighbor's backyard, and the way the developer set this up 25 years ago is technically I own half of her backyard, but there's a lease that she has a 99-year lease to that backyard, and she pays all of her bills based on that backyard lease, I guess. So, if you just do, how much property do you own, she would own a lot less property, and I own a lot more than we're currently paying on water bills. And I'm guessing that there's all kinds of complications when you get into what is lot size and how are you going to assess this? So, you just, that's just a beware of how to deal with it.
Thank you for sharing that. I was not aware of, you know, particular circumstance like that. But yes, we are very mindful of that. That's why one of the legs of the stool is ease of administration, because that, we need to be able to make this so this isn't an administrative nightmare. It is going to be a range. But, you know, like you're, could be where someone is between you and your neighbor, one of you would end up in the middle range, and one of you would have been in the lower range, and so, that's something we'll have to look at.
Okay. Let's see, I see there's a, Jerry has his hand raised?
Oh, Jerry is our consultant, Jerry Bradshaw. So let me introduce you to Jerry Bradshaw from SCI.
Hi, thank you, Kristen. Yeah, I can answer a couple of these questions at a pretty, pretty high level and we can get into more detail at, at the next month's meeting. But parcel size really isn't the basis for the fee. Parcel size is just the way we put categories together. And on residential, we'll divide properties into, I think in this case, four different categories, small, medium, large and very large parcels. But within each category, we go in and do a very thorough sampling and measure the impervious surface. So if you have a chunk of your backyard is actually occupied by your neighbor or vice versa, it's only if some of that, if you have paved patio or a long driveway or something, would that even come into play? And since it's this statistical approach, would only, it really kind of falls out of the equation. We don't base it on your parcel size and which is good news since you may not be control of your whole parcel. But we look at it on a statistical basis, measure the impervious surface on a sampling of lots throughout each size category. And we adjust the, the limits, the, the boundaries of each size category based on the data that we find. And that's how we do the residential parcels. For commercial parcels, it's a little different. In fact, in, in, in Del Mar, there were so few commercial and non-residential parcels. We simply went on aerials and measured the, the impervious surface on each and every one. So we actually kind of took the statistical approach out of the equation there. And to answer one of the other questions as far as making a change, I think the change will be easy to understand when you compare maybe a commercial property and it's a type of business that doesn't use any water. And right now they're paying a, a stormwater bill based on their water meter consumption, but yet they're surrounded by a lot of parking lot and they have a lot of runoff. This will bring some of those anomalies back into conformance with the fairness doctrine for stormwater runoff, because we base it on basically how much water runs off your property. So hopefully that helps clarify some of the, some of the questions that have come up and we can get into more nitty gritty next time around and be ready for that.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Okay, Scott, is your hand still up or did you have a follow-up?
I have one other, one other question. In the last couple of weeks, I walk the dog to the beach early in the morning and there's been a series of trucks going by the public works area carrying very large storm sewer pipes. Does that have anything to do with what we're talking about? Or is there a project going on somewhere where you're improving the storm sewer?
Kristen, you're, you're muted.
Sorry about that. You know, I do not know the answer to that. I'm wondering, CJ, are you aware? Because they're not, it's not anything related to this, this particular project that we're working on and I'm not aware of. Oh, Beth has just texted me that it's. Beth, would you like to comment on what you're aware of related to this project, please?
I'm sorry. Oops.
Beth? She, okay, sorry, I'll, she might be having some technical issues. So Beth?
This is CJ, um, this is CJ, City Manager. Kristen, does it have anything to do with Sandag's project? I know, I mean, Public Works is doing sand replenishment down at the beach. I'm not aware of any big, other big project they're working on. Is it related to Sandag's big project on the bluff?
It's probably the NCTV things. This is Karen. They've had a lot of big equipment down there and they've been doing quite a bit of construction. So I would bet it's related to that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sorry about that. I would suspect that it's the Sandag Bluff Reinforcement Project that's been going on. Because they have, they've had a lot of trucks going in and out. And I'm, I'm not sure the type of pipe that you've been seeing, but they have been hauling in a lot of materials as part of the bluff stabilization project.
Thanks. Okay, very good. All right, Kristen, anything else?
No, we appreciate your time unless you have any other questions for us or comments. And we'll, otherwise we'll be working with you to schedule a, a time in November.
Great. Well, thank you very much and we'll look forward to getting back to this in November.
Thank you.
All right, we have just two more.